All right, we're about two minutes late getting started, but it's almost the right time. And that means we can tear into our agenda, which I don't find at the top of my package here. Here we go. Let's start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
First question I have, do these tables get moved back because it's too close for you now?
That's your broken money.
Yeah.
All right, the next item here on the agenda is approval of the agenda, but I think before we move into that, we should discuss the issue that Peter has raised. And if you want to just state it, Peter, it's fine with me.
Yes, at the front of the town hall, there is a schedule of meetings for the year. Covers the whole year. And on that notice, it says we're meeting September 10th, not September 3rd. So my question is, I do not know what the Open Meetings Act and FOIA is in Michigan. And I'm not talking about the notice that's put on the, on our door that opens that says we're up here and the other people are down there. There's just a list of all the meetings for the year, the schedule, and we're listed on as the 10th, if I read it correctly, which I think I did. Is that a problem?
You're listed as?
The BCA meeting, September 10th.
And when did it get changed?
I don't know that it ever got changed. That's just what that, that's what that one says.
You were looking at it just now?
Just now, I was curious, you know, I was here a couple of minutes early and I looked.
I think what he's referring to is the schedule of meetings that's approved by board trustees.
Annual calendar.
And I didn't know that either, do you want to add?
Well, unless I'm reading it wrong and in my, in my dotage, that's a very strong possibility.
In, in, in your package of things, do we have a copy of the notice that was in there?
Yes. I'm not talking about the published notice.
Or one public hearing.
I mean, it's published, I'm talking about what's posted there as our meeting dates.
So what's the board group as the meeting date? The 10th or the 3rd?
Can I take a minute and show it to her so instead of, why don't I just show you what it is?
It does say the 10th, online too.
Online?
Yes.
I'm looking at the online calendar, it's the 3rd.
The approved schedule.
Oh, I'm looking at the monthly calendar.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the annual calendar.
I'm looking at the annual approved schedule of minutes.
And I also don't know when the monthly showed up on here, just like board trustees, special meeting. I don't know if it was 18 hours in advance.
Oh, we knew about it a couple weeks ago.
Any special meetings are not on that, that calendar?
That calendar.
Because special meetings are called?
On that one.
Right.
Yeah, but that calendar is the planning commission, the ZBA, the board trustees, the road commission, and I think?
The farmland and open space preservation board.
Yeah, now that they're a board, it's on there.
Right, but the question is, what is the effect of that day being different than us all being here wanting to have a meeting?
Yeah, I wanted to have a meeting tonight.
Yep.
I wanted to have a meeting tonight.
You wanted to have a meeting tonight?
I'm here.
Okay, well, maybe you could come to us.
I ran in.
I could come to that, so do.
Ran into a little bit of an issue with a special planning commission meeting we wanted to have that did not get noticed in time. And I just happened to look that day. If I would've looked the day before, they could've hung the thing out and they were just having discussions. So it's not like, you know, not like anything formal action was going to be taken, but still figured the best thing to do at that point was cancel it. And this is a little different deal, I'm just saying. Not sure we've been paying enough, we township have been paying enough attention to that.
Yeah.
We, ZBA and planning commission are just the, like the internal customers of that process, really.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of a while to think this through, I like it. It's a good thing our attorney's here.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have an answer. Be nice to have an answer now, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we'll insist on.
Well, my, my bike group leaves in two minutes.
Michael, do you like to be Michael? Is that your favorite name?
That's what I call myself. I don't mind any of the cases.
If that's what you call yourself, we'll probably call you that too, at least to your face.
Thank you. Call me whatever you like otherwise.
Okay.
Now, do you have a copy of the notice that was in the, in the paper?
It's for the public hearing.
For one public hearing.
I think I have both notices.
The other one was previously noticed.
Did you say it was posted online? So was it was posted?
It's posted online, so when you look at the approved meetings for the year, it's posted as the 10th, but if you look at the township calendar, it's posted as the 3rd.
For the month, and it shows zoning board appeals tonight, but I don't know when that got put up. Because underneath it, it also says, says special meeting board trustees, which I presume was not put up more than, you know, a couple of days ago.
Okay.
So just because it's on here for tonight doesn't prove that it was sufficient.
Does, um, does the, in either of that, the public hearings, were those things on your agenda? Those were posted?
One public hearing was noticed in the newspaper in advance. The other one was actually noticed for last month and?
It's been adjourned?
Yeah.
To tonight?
Yeah, which is, that's okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
You can adjourn public hearings without having it reposted.
Right.
If all public hearings that were on the agenda tonight, if both of those were posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act and the newspaper is official in time under the zoning and area and also the 15 days, then, then I think you're fine. But I don't feel that I would hear any other questions besides those two things.
Okay.
Yeah, and you still have to have your call of the public, right? So you have to have it after a meeting, and so you can even do a posted public hearing, you still need to have your call of the public.
Yes.
So I would do your necessary call of the public, your two things that were, two public hearings that were published.
Okay.
And I would adjourn all of the three members to the next.
Well, which pretty much is just approval of minutes.
What about the section where the zoning board of appeals get to complain about things?
You got to adjourn that.
Oh, bummer. Okay.
So that's what I would do, and I think we could, you're probably safe either way, because I, I just don't know when that other notice was posted and I can't verify that. But I think you're probably fine either way, but if you want to be on the super side, I would just do the public hearings that were noticed along with your full account that you had, and then adjourn everything else that was on your agenda. I didn't specifically look for other papers, but, um, so. Concerns, rescheduling, whoever, the ZBA meeting.
Yeah, well, we could, we can adjourn every other thing.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you'll just, I will just go through the November first one, just do that in October, you'll still have enough time to post it or whatever.
Okay.
Okay, and does anybody know whether we have a scheduled meeting in October?
I haven't heard otherwise.
So if we didn't have a meeting, would we have to meet to reschedule the November meeting?
We have nothing on the, for the agenda in October. We have no pending applications, as far as you know.
As far as I know, correct.
Well, then, my suggestion would be that we would adjourn to the next, these other items, to the next regular meeting of the ZBA.
Which this shows as October 1st.
Right, except that we don't know that we're going to have any business.
Right.
So.
Yep.
So I, looking through here, I would think that we would move item four and item?
Nine.
And what, what is eight? I mean, what, that, oh, there must be, there must be an election. Okay, so we can't do that tonight, so therefore we'll have to hold it on election day.
We'll have to have an October meeting, just to deal with that.
I don't know, this is something, okay. Well, then, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to, uh, to delete item four and? Nine?
Eight, eight and nine.
Eight and nine? Okay.
And then the other nine becomes ten.
And, and the other nine, yeah, which we'll, we'll leave in.
Becomes eight.
Okay, so is that motion clear as mud?
Yes, so moved.
Support.
Second.
All those in favor? I opposed, all right, we, we have an approved agenda now.
Could Marty second that?
Uh, I think?
Yeah, it doesn't matter, somebody down there.
There was a fight between him and Beth.
Yeah.
But I heard Marty's voice.
He, he was first. Public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here that wants to address the ZBA on anything that's not already on our abbreviated agenda? Hearing none, we can move on to action items. We'll start with item number one, that's 24ZBA 005, uh, from Jackie Bates. Does anybody have on the ZBA have any conflict of interest or ex parte contact to disclose? No, hearing none, we're good on that. And now, we'll start off, generally, Michael, at this point, we turn to you and say, tell us about this particular request. Are you ready to do that tonight?
Well?
Or would you like us to muddle through without you?
I'm not sure that I have too much to add, as this has been before the board previously.
Okay. Then I guess we're ready for petition or pres, well, so any, any board members have any questions of Michael before we begin?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's a question so much, but? And, and we probably held it out to view this one before, when it was originally on our agenda, but do we have a requirement to stake out any of the proposed new, new building lines? Because I didn't, there were some stakes, but I didn't see anything that staked out, didn't obviously stake out the new, uh, like new footprint. That may be helpful. I'm not saying that it's at all critical for this one, but just in general, if that isn't in our packet, we, uh, we might want to consider that in instructions for the applicants.
I thought I saw stakes.
I saw.
I don't see stakes.
I did.
I saw a stake right by the existing building. I didn't see anything that, that looked like it was with the, uh?
There were two.
Addition?
There were three.
Three? Where was the third?
Right by the, the little gate fence thing that had the skis on it.
I saw that, oh, no, that's right.
And then there was one in the southwest.
Yeah.
All right, then I missed it, I'm sorry.
Southeast corner.
Yeah.
Okay.
That said house, so I don't know if that was the house.
We can ask the petitioner.
I think we're ready for petition or presentation.
Yeah.
Hello, Jackie, could you find a button on the side and press it until it's green? Thank you. Hi. I'm Jackie Bates, um, as you guys said, I was here in March of 2023 requesting variance for the front yard setback. Um, what's required is a 25 feet, I was requesting it to be at 21.87 feet at the time. Um, and nothing has really changed, we just missed our window of opportunity due to closing down a family business, and so I'm basically here seeking to approve.
Okay. Jackie, I have another problem, which is? Has, did anybody discuss with you at all the need to get a variance for the, the water body side?
At the time, in, in March of 2023, we did have that on our paperwork, and it was discussed in that meeting and approved. Um, when I went and was dealing with Ashley, and she helped me fill all this out, she said it wasn't necessary.
Well, when it was approved, do you recall what was approved? My, here, let me explain to my concern. The, the measurement for the height of your existing structure, which you have the right to recreate without, it's, it's a legally non-conforming situation, and you have the right to do that over again without asking any permission. But when your builder or architect calculated the effective height of that structure, they do it by taking half the height of the peaked roof, and that comes out to a number that's about six inches less than your proposed new structure with its railing. And, and I'm trying to figure out if, back when you were here before, if that was discussed and approved, or what happened and why that's not before us again tonight?
I see. As far as why it's not, you know, we, like I said, we did, Ashley and I did discuss it, and she didn't feel it was an issue because we were going from, uh, I believe it's, we're at an existing 27.58, and the new requirements, whenever that became the new requirements, 35, is that what you were coming to, or?
No, what I'm talking about is presently, your structure is closer to the water body than is permitted.
Yeah.
But, but it's been there for a long time. And that means that you have the right to recreate anything, more or less, in that same footprint. But our ordinance also says that you don't have the right to go any higher than the structure that you're recreating is. And your current structure calculated the way that our ordinance says you're supposed to calculate it, I think is something like 13.47 feet. And the proposed structure with the, with the additional guardrail thing around that upper deck is like 13.9 some feet. So it's about a six inch difference. And, and what I'm wondering is where you are in the process for moving this forward. We, we can, I'm just talking myself, I haven't discussed this with the other board members. They may slap me down and tell me they don't even agree with this. But tonight, we could consider and approve your first variance. But we're not in a position to tell you, yeah, that's okay, go ahead and redo the part of your house that's close to the water body. And so you will probably have to be back here with another variance request for that. And so the question is, and you can answer it now, or you can answer it after we've all talked about it, uh, or you can just, uh, we could either do the one tonight and, and do the other one whenever you come back and ask for it properly, or we can adjourn tonight and have you come back with everything.
Okay, I don't know if this helps, I'm looking at the, um, I believe it'd be the meeting notes from the March 27th, 23, and it states, there was a question about the height limitation was due to the handouts on the new rooftop deck, the front yard setback, in addition of three feet one inches to allow more space. So I, I'm not exactly sure how it was addressed without reading through this specifically.
But in any event, that would've expired, it would've approved then, but it, it would have to be reapproved now. So I, I, I think we all see this as a reasonably attainable variance, you know, without prejudicing our ability to slap you down. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't see everybody having a big problem, but you still need the variance in order to do what you want to do. And so you're either going to have to get a variance tonight, the time on which will start to tick, or you could adjourn and then do it all at the same time, but you'll have to file another request.
Why don't we go ahead and do the, do the front yard?
Okay.
And then we'll come back.
Okay, very good. So having worked our way through that, do the, are there questions for the applicant from the ZBA members?
Well, I have a question about what you were just saying.
All right.
But it's more because I'm trying to figure out what Ashley was thinking, so maybe I'm going to table my question.
Okay.
Because it doesn't make sense right now.
Okay.
No extraneous discussion.
Anybody with questions that they would like to ask?
When, um, you're taking down the front porch? And is the front porch in conformity right now? Is it, is it conforming to the regulations? And then you're going beyond that to that post that was in the corner there?
That is correct. I'm not certain if the measurement for the front porch is within that 25 feet, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, um, it just, it looks, it looks so huge to me to go from, from there to the new, the new line. It just seems like it's, like right in the middle of the yard. Well, not right in the middle of the yard, you know what I'm saying? It looks, it looks so much closer to the road.
I think they're kind of at the front of the house and not the front porch. That answers the question, but I mean?
I'm trying to read that. Existing porch. Uh, that's 22.5. Well, I can see it on here, so.
I guess, I, I'm not sure I understand the question.
It, it's okay, I think from looking at this, I can tell, it just, it seems like it's so much further than, than what is being requested by looking at that post, but I'm just trying to think of it in terms of the, if it was coming from the porch or if it was coming from the house or, but I don't think that matters. I mean, the porch is.
The existing house, it says here, is 45 feet from the front. Wow. That's the, the existing structure.
Right, okay.
So they're going to come up with that, they're going to have the porch up and come up with that, up to that stage.
That's, that's fine, I'm just, I was just curious and?
Any other questions for the applicant? Is there anybody here who wants to speak to us about this issue? Because we're, we're up.
I have the, the 20, 23 minutes in front of me. Would any of help at all?
No, I don't think so, because whatever they did and whatever we did a year ago has expired, and so it doesn't, I don't think it really matters at this point. We'll have to, we'll have to rehear it. Thank you. Yeah, you can sit, yeah, you can sit down.
Thank you.
Do we have any letters on this one from anybody? Oh, I turned to Michael.
No.
You, you don't have any letters. Did, did, did any come in and they just didn't give them to you or?
No correspondence on this.
Okay, all right, good deal. And there's nobody in, uh, in attendance that wants to speak to this? So I think we're ready for deliberations and standards of review. Anybody have any thoughts? All right, I'll start. Seems like a reasonable request, it's a small lot, it gets her three bedrooms. There's still going to be enough room for parking between her house and the yard, or in the road, and I think it's appropriate.
Maybe it actually eliminates the non-conformity, doesn't it, by increasing the size?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No other, no other thoughts, no other comments?
No, I think it'll be an improvement in the area.
Okay, well then, let's start through the standards of review. This is for this variance. Standard one is, does the requested variance meet the following standard? The strict application of the terms of this ordinance would constitute a practical, I got the wrong, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm going to take.
How about this one? Practical difficulty, this is for a 21-foot, 21... What is the request? I thought it was 21.
It's right at the top here.
21.97, I thought was the request, is that wrong?
I read it 21 foot.
Okay, it is 21, okay.
I'm page 25, 21.
Okay. Okay, uh, this is for a 21-foot front yard setback instead of a 25-foot front yard setback. Practical difficulty, the strict application of the terms of this ordinance would constitute a practical difficulty. We only have one variance requested here. I mean, a single vote?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Chair votes yes as well. Two, physical conditions, 2906C2, the practical difficulty is due to some physical condition peculiar to the property involved?
Yes.
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 And chair votes yes as well. Small, small lot, um, that requires a certain amount of variance to build something useful. Self-created, that's number three, 2906C3. Uh, the practical difficulty is not self-created, Kathy?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
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 Peter? And the chair votes yes as well. Four, reasonable amount necessary, 2906C4. The variance is a reasonable amount necessary to mitigate the practical difficulty, Kathy?
Yes.
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 Marty?
Yes.
Peter? And the chair votes yes. Five, public health, safety, and welfare, 2906C5. Approval of the variance will not be injurious to the public health, safety, and welfare.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes as well, no evidence that it would be injurious. Six, adjacent properties, 2906C6. Six, adjacent properties, twenty nine oh six C six. Approval of the variance will not affect the use of adjacent properties or the area in a substantially adverse manner. Kathy?
I'm going to say yes.
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 And the chair votes yes as well. I think the, this is gonna make the area a nicer place to be. It's a nice improvement. And seven is intended of the ordinance, twenty nine oh six C seven. Approval of the variance is consistent with the intent and purpose of this ordinance. Kathy?
Yes.
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 Marty?
Yes.
Peter? Chair votes yes as well. Got enough yes votes for approval of this. I would accept a motion to approve.
I would like to make a motion.
I'd love that.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the petition number twenty four ZBA dash zero zero five for the property located at nine four zero five Lake Drive, tax ID number D zero four zero two four hundred zero one six for the requested variance from section seven point zero seven three for a local and private road setback of a twenty five foot setback to the twenty one foot setback requested.
Support.
Okay. We'll take a, take another vote. Kathy?
Who, who being second?
Oh.
Me.
Okay.
Kathy?
Yes, I, yes.
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 Peter?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Congratulations, you have that variance. Um, be aware that you gotta do something about the deck.
Yes.
Okay?
Well, thank you very much.
And, and be, I, I, I usually caution people that they have to be aware that this variance will expire in a year. I don't think I have to tell you that.
I'll do that.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. That allows us to move on to something else. So that takes us to item two. Petition number twenty four ZBA zero six from Steve Kaplan. And anybody have any conflict of interest or experte contact to discuss? Hearing none, there isn't any? And I'm, I'm guessing, Michael, that you're not gonna tell us much about this request either. Would that be correct?
Well, I, I can if you like.
Oh, I'd love it. Tell us.
So the, the applicant proposes to build a driveway along the western edge of the property to, to come down toward the south, toward behind the building with a, a, a loop, one direction loop for drop off and pickup of, of kids who will be, you know, who will be at the facility. And then back out to the parking lot. Along with that, at the southeast corner of the property, that the parking lot that you see at the, at the back, most of that will, well, that will be removed. There'll be the new roof that covers part of it. But that pavement will be removed. So in total, you'll have less impervious surface on the site. The applicant is proposing to increase the size of the play yard to, to, over where that part of the parking lot used to be as well. The, the, the loop going down to the south behind the building there is to, is for younger kids, for infants and toddlers. They'll, they'll be taken care of on the bottom level of the true level structure. And at closer to street level, the upper floor is going to be for older kids whose, whose parents or guardians can drop them off at the, at the front door. And, or, or, you know, park in the front lot as it, as, as it exists.
Okay. Any questions of Michael about this application? Okay.
Were there any letters from anyone?
No, no, no correspondence or, or calls or emails about this.
Okay. Do I correctly perceive that there already? Isn't there already some kind of a driveway going down there already or? No, I remember there isn't, there isn't.
Not on that side.
Not on that side.
So the, the way this was written up, at least to me, it sounded like a request from, for a side yard variance. But I don't think it really is a request for a side yard variance. I think it's a request for a variance from the effect of, what is it? Eighteen point oh four C. That would, would, so if we're not approving the ability to build structures within fourteen feet of the side lot line, we're agreeing that eighteen point oh four C will not apply until you get to within fourteen feet of the side lot line. Is that your understanding as well?
For eighteen, well, eighteen point oh four refers to the site development standards for the, for the zoning district that is in, that it's in, which is the C district. So that triggers thirteen point oh two, uh, where it has the fifty foot required setback that they're asking, for which they're asking for variance.
Well, but my point is that we're not giving a variance, a, a thirty six foot variance from the side yard setback. We're giving a variance to the very strict application of that part of the side yard requirement. In other words, we're, we're not saying it's okay, build whatever you want to out to within fourteen feet of the west property line.
No, certainly not build whatever you want. Uh, eighteen oh four is, is parking standard specifically.
Right, and isn't that the only thing that we're gonna give a variance to is my, is, is my question? At least that's how I read it. And I wasn't sure that we should say that we're giving a side, a variance to the side yard setback as a blanket statement.
Correct.
Okay.
We are giving, or what's before us is to give them that variance, but yeah, your point is that it's gonna be a variance so that they can pave closer than fifty feet. But that does not give them the ability to build structure closer than fifty feet. And that's clarification, I guess we can make in the motion, huh?
Well, I guess my proposed thought about this is that we grant a variance from the requirements of eighteen oh four C one to allow parking spaces, queuing lanes and maneuvering lanes up to fourteen feet from the west lot line instead of fifty feet. As opposed to talking about giving a side yard variance, across the board, side yard variance.
Wouldn't they still need side yard variance because we just allowed them to put a road in closer than fifty feet from the property line?
I mean, the request is for eighteen oh four C.
Yeah.
It's not for thirteen.
It's eighteen.
Right.
Yeah, which is, isn't that, the language I just lifted was from eighteen oh four.
Yeah, so I'm not worried about them dancing around thirteen.
Okay.
Right, because eighteen oh four C specifically references the driveway.
Well, I see what you're talking about. Yeah, the request is eighteen oh four C, but we called it side yard setback.
Allow fourteen foot side yard setback instead of fifty feet.
Just not what the real, that section is.
Well, so that's really interesting because I was just looking at the definition of setbacks. And I had looked at this earlier. And I believe that this could potentially fall in that definition. The minimum required distance between a structure improvement or use in lot lines, access easements and other structures, natural features and uses. So use as a driveway or an improvement as a driveway?
Well.
Maybe I'm pushing that definition a little bit.
I, I guess, I thought that elsewhere, and I guess we could turn to our attorney who has thoughts.
So the, the application itself is for variance from eighteen oh four C one, right? And so it provides, so they're seeking a variance from the requirement that they, that their parking spaces, queuing spaces and maneuvering lanes be with the, or meet the side yard setback. So what you'd be granting the variance for is to say that their parking spaces, queuing spaces and maneuvering lanes can exceed the setback by however many feet.
Or, or would it be wrong for us to say that it could be up to fourteen feet from the west lot line?
Right, but as long as your motion says they're getting a variance from eighteen oh four C.
Yeah.
Yeah, not thirteen.
Specifically to a little.
Yeah. However.
These and these elements to exist within the setback.
Yeah.
That's all you're allowing if you're eighteen oh four C.
The notice in the paper said request for, sorry, I've got a new term in appliance and I feel like I'm talking with a one trick.
Yeah.
Anyhow, uh, request for variance from section thirteen point zero two, side yard setback fifty feet. That, that is what was in the paper, I presume, but have no facts. That was also what went out in the letters to the neighbors.
But I'm thinking this is a lesser included thing that we're giving.
It was noticed as a thirteen oh two.
And while we're on that, I thought, or this might have been a couple of administrators ago, I thought that we weren't going to be that specific because it, it left some ability to, we're stating what the, what the issue is, but it left some ability to maneuver if a different type of relief was better or kind of to your point, we can, we can go less than that, we can't go more than that, but
Right.
but that is the section that was, that was
Notice.
referenced in here.
But is it?
I don't know what that leaves us.
I mean, but, but what it says in, in eighteen oh four C one is it, she'll meet the yard, side yard setbacks for, or the setbacks for the district in which it's located. So that's thirteen oh two, right? And, cause it's commercial. I mean, that is the right reference, isn't it?
Uh.
Well, it, it's part of the right reference.
Yeah, that's like a really broad. It would be like a really broad, a much broader variance, I think, than what we would be giving under eighteen.
Okay.
So we noticed a much broader requirement than what we would be willing to give tonight. But I see your point and I think we should include it in the motion and say for the.
Probably. So then we're, our action is clear at least?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in, in, in any event, uh, now that we've talked to Michael about this, maybe the petitioner would like to come and talk to us. Do you have a petitioner? You're not the petitioner? Okay. Well then, the, a petitioner clearly doesn't care what we're doing here tonight.
I guess they got confused just when we made the meeting.
Yeah, maybe they looked at.
Requested variance from section thirteen point oh two, side yard setback fifty feet. There's no mention of in the notice that I could see about anything in section eighteen.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay. Well, I don't think we're gonna be able to question a petitioner, so we have no public, we have no letters?
None.
Anybody here wanna talk about this with us? No? Okay.
Okay.
Uh, then I think we're ready for our deliberations and standards of review. Does anybody wanna grant this?
So I'm strug, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm gonna, I'm very familiar with that property. I've had business in that property. Yeah, I had a kid at the daycare center, not the current one, but the prior one that left. And I think it would be an improvement to see all that green space back there. But then on the other hand, I'm really struggling with how close that driveway is to the neighbor.
Yes.
And I'm really like, that na, that poor neighbor is gonna have all these cars coming up and down, back and forth. I mean, we all know what the kids' drop off line looks like at, you know, at the middle schools and the younger schools. And so I'm struggling with this for that reason. I think it would be an enormous improvement overall in terms of aesthetics. Um, but I don't think that that's necessarily what practical difficulty is based on. Um, I'm, I was trying to figure out what the current setback is for the driveway that's presently there and if that would, if it would just be a flip, you know what I mean? So like, would it just go from fourteen feet on one side to fourteen feet on the other? And it looks like it's pretty close, but, you know, I can't say for sure. And since the petitioner's not here, I can't, you know, question that. So as much as I think that aesthetically this would be a really great change, um, I, I am struggling because I see how close this is to the neighboring property and knowing the amount of traffic that could potentially be there, I think it would be interruptive. And there's a reason for a fifty foot setback for things like this.
May I?
Of course.
I did speak to the applicant over the phone one time. The, the reason they wanted to put it on the west specifically was because of the, to be able to expand the play yard to the south of that, to have that all adjacent. Uh, and I spoke to him about capacity at the facility. They're, they're proposing between a hundred and fifty and two hundred kids altogether uh, when it's, when it's all, all built out and done. So, um, so the queuing wouldn't be quite the same as a middle school. But, uh, I mean, you will have cars coming at the same time, of course, but if, if that helps at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
If I may.
You may.
Is this a good time?
Yes.
Um, I will not be supporting this because I don't see what's, how this property is, is anything unique about this lot, this property to entitle them for a variance.
Okay. Any other thoughts before we start applying the decision criteria?
Well, I, I guess I can say I agree with what Peter just said and, and I had the exact same thoughts that Beth just expressed.
I also was thinking that it was so narrow. It looked, looked really narrow for two cars to be passing right there with all the air conditioning.
Were they gonna, were they gonna have one-way traffic through there? And, and like that's, that's the enter and around the back was.
It's, it's a.
Around and then go off.
It's two-way right there.
Yeah, it's two-way.
Yeah, that, that looked so tight. Plus, I, I think presently it's fifty feet to the building. And there's a big generator. The AC units are not as far out as the generator. Yeah, there's, there's much less space there to make two lanes of traffic. It, it's up to them to figure out how they're gonna do it. But it it will potentially change the experience of their neighbors right next to them in residential zoned area.
Am I correct that this is residential on both sides of this par, parcel or is that?
Correct. Uh, the zoning to the west is residential, the zoning to the east is also commercial.
Oh, it's also commercial. Okay, and, and that's the side where there already is the driveway that they plan to dispose of?
Yes.
All right. Are we, any, anybody else wanna talk about anything before we, um, start applying criteria that I have to find?
I have another thing for you.
Yeah.
I apologize.
By all means.
And that is, I also don't see how this is not self-created in the sense that the need for this is where, because of where their building happens to be, not because of anything to do specifically with the lot.
Okay.
He might not have chosen where they're, he bought a property, but the the house is there, it's caused by the house being there, not by anything to do with the lot.
Okay, talk among yourselves while I shuffle shuffle papers.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, we can occupy some time.
Yeah.
Sure, I I agree with the concept, I'm not sure that I agree with like the technicality, you know, somebody bought this property and that's the way it already was, but to me, the self-creation is kind of, well, I want to do it this way. I imagine there's another way to accomplish most of what they want to do, is not do that, but, yeah, not not our business to figure that part out.
I can see from a safety standpoint why you would want to be closer to the back of the property rather than closer to North Territorial, but and having to come in and and turn around.
Well, and a lot of that depends on on how they're gonna queue that traffic too.
Yeah.
You know, a hundred vehicles lined up between the back door and territorial could be a problem.
Can somebody give me their decision criteria that they got with this, and I'll go through it for us? Okay. Thanks to Marty, I can now apply the decision criteria. And I think, I still think what we're talking about is not allowing a fourteen foot side yard setback, but rather we're talking about granting a variance from the requirements of eighteen oh four C one to allow parking spaces, queuing lanes and maneuvering lanes up to fourteen feet from the west lot line instead of fifty feet. I think that's what our, what's before us.
But doesn't that also, if if the side yard requirement is fifty feet setback, and we're allowing anything to be built in there, like pavement, we've approached upon that, so don't we need that?
That's, that, I don't think we do, because I, again, I've talked to council, but there, the ordinance specifically says that the setback does not require, apply to roadways or, uh, uh, roadways.
This isn't a roadway, though.
No, it's something.
Driveway.
A driveway.
Well, it does apply to driveways, which is something we may want to take up with the review committee, but there, I I, if there is an exception for for private roadways not being covered by the setback, side yard setback, or by setback requirements, that you can have a private roadway in the setback. I'll find it for you later, but are you saying that you don't like my description of what this requires?
In a motion, I would just say, variance from eighteen oh four referencing the setback of fifty feet of set forth in thirteen oh two.
I have, I'm 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 gonna be on the negative side anyway, so I don't know weighing in there, again, the advertisement makes no reference to section eighteen, and you, and how are you gonna create, grant a variance from a section of an ordinance that's not even advertised?
Yeah, I guess if you're on the negative side, it doesn't matter, right?
Right, I'm voting against it anyway.
Right, because it may, it may be a moot point, and and same thing to my point, I'm getting kind of hung up about, well, is it this or that?
Yes.
In five minutes, it might not matter.
Exactly, so if you're voting, if you're gonna vote yes, just consider what I just.
Well, okay, my my. My question then, Peter, is that you think that what we're voting on is to allow fourteen foot side yard setback?
I I have no opinion on that, other than I'm just saying, if the motion references section eighteen in lieu of section thirteen and not section thirteen, the ad- the advertisement merely speaks to section thirteen, there's no reference in the advertisement at all to section eighteen.
Right, the paperwork we have, or this might be the second one.
Well, you know what?
Say something different there, is eighteen oh four C one side yard setback, and and in the paper, it says thirteen point zero two side yard setback fifty feet.
Well, since I get the flavor of where this is going, I think maybe I shouldn't have tried to.
Show our misery.
My mind, I maybe I shouldn't have tried to change the description to what I thought it ought to be and stay with what it is. Yes.
So I think your duty tonight, regardless of what was published in the paper, is to evaluate the variance request that the applicant made, right? That applicant made a request from eighteen oh four C. It's unfortunate that thirteen oh two was what was noticed, however, when you look at the zoning enabling act and what's required to be in a notice is the subject, it described the nature of the request, and the nature of the request is for a setback, a variance from a, from a setback, and because eighteen oh four C is more restrictive in terms of what you would know from thirteen oh two, I think you're still within that describing the nature of the request. Legally speaking, transparency and policy-wise, that's up to you, whether you think we'll look at enough notice for you to be transparent. Legally speaking, I think the notice was sufficient, however, you you still need to, and that you need to evaluate it based on what the applicant requested, not what somebody at the township put in the paper, I guess, is is what, because if they make it, for instance, if they decide to appeal it, you didn't evaluate the request, you evaluated something different.
Right.
And just in the application.
Good guidance.
I am really sorry that I'm this late as I am, but I'm the owner of the building and the applicant, so.
Ah.
I've been listening to the live stream, so I heard everything on the way.
Okay.
But.
Well, come on up, we we.
Yeah, I'm really sorry about that.
Love to hear from you.
I have it in seven in my in my in my schedule as opposed to six.
On the side of the microphone, on this side, there's a button, push until it's green. Thank you.
Hi there, Steve Kaplan, owner of nine four seven seven, North of Florida.
Okay.
Apologies.
So, tell us what you want to do and why.
Sure, yeah, on this, first, I I heard some of the commentary, so it's all right, I'll try to address some of those things. You're exactly right, the idea was to take, there's basically, this building was built in nineteen seventy seven, it was conceptualized as a medical practice, and they anticipated having lots of longer stay people for either OR or ER visits, et cetera. The building didn't work that way, and and, you know, as an office building, it didn't work so much either, either post-COVID, it really doesn't work that way. It's been, at least in part, a school, a preschool, a monastery school for fifteen years, new ownership recently took over, and we started contemplating how how we can make the school work more efficiently, and also grow the presence of the school in the building so that it it used most, if not all, of the space. In doing that, we we looked at how, and I I, the architect for this, Lawrence Brink, was based in Dexter before he passed away, a number of years ago, and I had the chance to speak to him when he built the building, his idea was that they were, they thought they would expand this building to double the size at some point, so they placed it tight to one side of the lot, but the service drive to the lower level parking lot is as far to the opposite side of the lot as possible. What that means is that if I want to try to remove some of the unnecessary asphalt on this site, I would still have to preserve some sort of a driveway to get over the door where parents would drop off kids, that to me seems like a colossal waste of what could be a nice, safe play area, but if I have cars driving through it, it will never work that way. So the idea was to flip the service drive that's on the east side of the lot, or move it to the west side of the lot. The property line is close, and there is a a house that's also close by, their driveway is is pretty much on that same side, so that is where their cars access the property, and our two driveways, if there were to be a driveway there, are going to continue to be separated by a pretty steep ravine, that's the drainage ravine for both sides, and it's heavily treed right now, if for any reason the trees, some of the trees were damaged or didn't make it in the construction process, I would be more than willing to replant them so that there was always a sufficient green screen between properties. It's not my intention to have this crowding onto the neighboring site, I I know, I know the family, I've talked to the family that rents there, so I I don't think they have a problem with this, but I can't speak for them, but I think with the presence of most of the trees that would stay, or if we had to add to that, we could keep that from being a dramatic impact on neighboring property. Also, it is far from the entirety of the customer traffic that will go down to this, it is strictly for the drop off of infants, and it's the idea is to get, you know, if you've ever watched, you know, a parent with a bassinet and all of the gear that it takes to drop them off for a day, there's there's, you know, you're not gonna set them up a flight of stairs or down any kind of incline, so we're trying to get them ready to grade. And those are the main driving forces behind this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
So during peak drop off and pickup times, what are you envisioning the traffic flow to be? Like, which which drive do people come in, come out, is it their choice, your choice?
So there are there are two curb cuts currently, we have been discussing which one of those we would, we would sort of make the main. We haven't, we haven't planned it, in all honesty, we haven't planned it because we were hoping to let experience be our our guide. We know that a a pretty dramatic increase in the in the student population here will will change the traffic time, right now, it's, I mean, if you've all seen it, it's an ocean of asphalt, I don't know how the initial concept for this building ever thought they would need that much blacktop, it's 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 a huge amount, and so, you know, my goal would be to reduce that as dramatically as possible, going to the, you know, the minimums of parking, we don't have a lot of long-term parking there, we would have, like you said, a line for drop off and and pickup, but leaving both curb cuts as they are, we would wait and sort of see how things are impacted, it might make sense to have infant parents take the far west curb cut and go straight down the side of the property line, do a turn, and come back up, and then try to keep all of the one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year old traffic on the other, the main curb cut, and have them come in just at the top lot, loop around at the upper door that's on the opposite corner of the building, so that those two aren't coming into close contact with each other. On the other hand, it it might make sense that everybody comes in one driveway, everybody leaves another driveway, so that if they're accident, if they're trying to get into busy traffic on North Territorial, having them line up and slow down in our parking lot rather than trying to jut out the traffic, but I don't, I don't know the answer to which one of those is best.
I'm concerned about with the proposed driveway around the back of the building, a lot of traffic approaching upon the residential zoned area to the west.
Yeah, I can appreciate that.
And and I appreciate that you're talking about greens and and replacing them and all. Just, I I understand a little better now, yeah, you're you're kind of playing the hand you're dealt, the building isn't where you would put it today, you're trying to trying to, you know, make a a more functional business out of it.
And also, I mean, as a side effect, getting rid of, I think, sixty percent of the blacktop that's there, more than half.
I'd just like to hear more, if if you could please, about how how you can control the impact that that it'll have, there's reasons there's that there's a fifty foot side yard setback, because next to a residential area, just kind of like to hear how you how you're gonna deal with that, that's probably my biggest hangup with this.
Sure, well, there's two things that that might be possible, one is by routing traffic close to the building up front, and only having it turn down that connector at the last moment, I could mitigate how many cars are lined up next to the neighbor's driveway, so that that would be one potential solution, just by messing around with traffic, traffic patterns on the asphalt that remains.
And that would be a condition that you would be willing to agree to if we got that far in this process tonight?
I think if that were the thing that really made this work, I mean, I I've tried to keep my options open from a, admittedly, I'm thinking about primarily traffic safety and and how to route the cars and and keep clients from being unhappy when they're dropping off and picking up, but if if some of that convenience had to be sacrificed to make sure that the neighbor was happy, I still think it's worth it.
And and it's not our, you know, our business to tell you how to run your business, but but this is germane, because that's exactly what you're asking
Yeah.
for, to to be able to approach further than the zoning ordinance
I agree.
would allow, so I'm just trying to see if I can find some common ground here.
I think that's fair.
My problem remains that in order to grant a variance, we have to find that this property is specific in qualifying for this kind of a variance, why it's different than any other commercially zoned property where an owner is coming to us and saying, let me run my driveway down a side closer to the neighbors, and I I'm having a little trouble seeing why your property is different than any other property, would every property, I I mean, that has its building slightly offset, qualify for this variance?
I think that, I don't know how to speak to that in terms of, I know the concerns of being careful to set precedents, that you don't want to, you know, continue to to honor in other cases, the thing that I think would be specific and unique in this township would be the use of this building, the ongoing use of this building will be a school, what I'm contemplating doing to this building pretty much means it won't ever be anything other than a school, so its use starts to make it separate from, let's say, a neighbor of the street who just wants to see their driveway on the other side of your yard. The placement of the building as is, because it was pushed so tight to one side of the of the lot, combined with the fact that it's now being reconfigured specifically as a school, means that as much as I can separate where cars drive and where kids play, it's probably, I can't imagine there's another place in the township that has that same concern or would. Okay?
Any other questions from the applicant?
I don't think so, the, when we get to the specific decision, decision criteria, I'm gonna struggle with kind of what what makes the situation special, and nobody else that would have the same problem would be also granted that relief.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm here, any other questions?
Okay.
In fact, I think the last time, yep, Mr. Chair, the the last time we were in kind of a similar situation, and it turned on practical difficulty, it might be helpful, Beth, if you have that open in front of you or.
I I can grab it real fast.
It's a tattoo on the back.
Practically, yes, but I have.
Yeah, practical difficulty, I think, is what.
Something else to throw in there too, and I just. Something else to throw in there, too, and I just wanna, I just wanna point something else out when I'm done with the, what a practical difficulty is.
I could take this darn thing out of my mouth and maybe, uh.
You're fine, you're fine, you're fine.
You're, you're much more concerned about it than any of the others.
Nobody can tell.
The rest of us haven't even noticed.
Yeah, practical difficulty, special or unique conditions that are peculiar to a lot that cause compliance with the standards of this ordinance to deprive the property owner of substantial rights similar to those enjoyed by other lots in the same zoning district. Economic, personal, or financial hardship alone does not constitute a practical difficulty. Additionally, inconvenience, aesthetic considerations, personal preference, or neighbor's opinions are not considered a practical difficulty.
Thank you. Can I speak to that for just one second?
Mm-hmm.
In that definition, it said difficulty has, the uniqueness has to apply to the lot, not to the use of the lot.
That's right.
A lot, and this, to me, is exactly that the Corman Farms property.
Right.
In that, he's got a property. What he wants to do is great.
Yeah.
You know, let me ju- let me just say, good daycare, fantastic, use fantastic, he's a, obviously a dedicated person willing to work with the neighbors, I got no problem with it, I just don't think he meets that criteria.
So, can I point something out, actually?
Absolutely.
Um, so, in mentioning the school, um, we do have a specific use standard for schools in Article seventeen. And it's Article seventeen, seventeen oh five institutional public facility use standards. So I don't know if this technically would be an institutional use standard, um, it's, it's not a public facility, but schools require, um, us, the principal building shall be at least seventy-five feet from any lot line, service areas and facilities shall be at least a hundred feet from a residential district, and parking areas shall be at least fifty feet from the front line properties in residential districts. So if this was to qualify as a school under seventeen oh five D, um, I think we're moving a, a little bit further away from the goal.
I know, but I don't think it is a school.
Doesn't count as a daycare center.
I think it's a daycare center.
So let's not call it a school, then.
Well, I, I, you know, I don't think you'd have to make it even harder for them.
Although daycare centers don't.
Oh, they found the daycare center section there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's very.
I don't know.
Group daycare.
Play area, play areas have to be fenced at least four feet high, not in the front yard.
And properly licensed.
Yeah.
Education facility, whether public or private, provides education pre elementary, elementary, secondary, and or post sec- secondary, if it's, if he's taking infants, it's really not.
Technically a school.
Correct. That's, that'd be my reading of it anyway, but I wasn't the C A would rule on that, not me.
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Any, any more discussion among the board members before we start to apply the standards?
No, I want it to happen.
All right, so, uh, once again, I, I think what we still need to be considering is the request under eighteen oh four C one, uh, to allow this driveway to be located within fourteen feet of the west lot line, as opposed to a blanket request for a fourteen-foot side yard setback. So, uh, if everybody's good with that, let's start through with, through the, uh, criteria. Practical difficulty twenty-nine oh six C one, the strict application of the terms of this ordinance would constitute a practical difficulty. Kathy?
Yes.
Beth?
Um, no.
Marty?
No, based on the, the definition that we just reviewed, I can't get there yet.
Peter?
I think this one is a yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You've surprised me.
Doesn't mean I'm, anyway, I think this one's a yes.
The chair votes no, because it's not unique to this property.
Isn't that number two?
Well, it's part of the definition of practical difficulty, isn't it?
Especially unique conditions.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, I, I will change my vote to no.
Okay. Now, we've had this situation before, and it's a good thing that we have counsel here tonight. We have seven criteria. The applicant has to get three yes votes on every one of the criteria. We've just started with the first item, on which there've been four no votes and only one yes vote, and all the rest of our questions deal with the assumption that there is a practical difficulty. So in, in your view, once we have done item one and it's failed, do we have to contort ourselves going through the rest of the considerations, many of which assume that we've already decided it's a practical difficulty?
Go through the law.
Okay. Oh, okay, that sounds like a lawyer. Yes, sir.
Do you feel that it says something here?
No, we, 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 we've heard, and we're, we're, we're working through this now. Two, uh, physical conditions twenty-nine oh six C two, the practical difficulty is due to some physical condition peculiar to the property involved. Kathy?
No.
Beth?
No, and I'm just gonna note that this lot, as a commercial lot, is extremely large compared to, relatively larger than many of the other commercial properties that we see in the township.
Marty?
I'm gonna say yes, but like the chair pointed out, th- there's this, like, assumption that, uh, it is a practical difficulty, and even though I didn't, I, I didn't agree with that, I think that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is.
So you're, you're voting yes?
Sounds more confusing, I think.
Peter?
No.
And, and the chair votes no as well. Three, self-created twenty-nine oh six C three, the practical difficulty is not self-created. Kathy?
No.
Beth?
So this is one of those no's, that's a yes?
Yes, I know this is a yes.
So, um, the, the, the building owner did not create this lot, he did not cause anything to, you know, he bought this lot as is, I'm assuming, from the builder, or maybe had it built, it doesn't matter. But to the degree that a practical difficulty doesn't exist, and there is no practical difficulty to be self-created, so.
Marty?
Yes.
Peter?
No.
The chair focusing on not self-created, uh, accepting the fact that we've already skipped over the issue of practical difficulty.
Right.
Votes yes, 'cause it's not self-created, whatever it is. Four, reasonable amount necessary twenty-nine oh six C four, the variance is a reasonable amount necessary to mitigate the practical difficulty. Kathy?
No.
Beth?
No, and I'm, I'm gonna comment on this one, too, um, for the record. The property next to it is a commercial property, it's not a residential property, and there is already a driveway on that side, and I know that that defeats the point.
To the east.
To the east, and I know that that defeats the aesthetic and maybe convenience point, but there is a driveway there already, it's adjoining another commercial property, so I, I have to say no here.
Marty?
Say that again, please, which one are we, uh?
We're on reasonable amount.
Yes.
Peter?
No.
And chair votes no as well. Five, public health, safety, and welfare twenty-nine oh six C five, approval of the variance will not be injurious to the public health, safety, and welfare. Kathy?
I'm gonna say no, I think it could possibly be.
Beth?
Actually, this is one that I'm gonna say yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Peter?
Mr. Chair, may I pose a question to counsel? Or would you?
How would she vote?
No. No. I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, ask her.
Thank you. The only testimony in this case that we've got is from the applicant. Are we limited in answering this question, and this actually comes up quite often, are we limited in answering this question to the testimony that's presented to us, or could we bring to bear to the answer this question, what we, what we happen to believe, based on our own personal observations and looking at the application?
And you can, you can, if you, if you've gone out and you view the property in property, yes, you can absolutely consider all of that, what you can consider are things that are irrelevant. For instance, you think, oh, you looked at the property across the street and said, well, that would be a better daycare site.
Right, okay. In that case, I will vote no.
On this one, the chair votes yes. Six, adjacent properties twenty-nine oh six C, twenty-nine oh six C six, approval of the variance will not affect the use of adjacent properties or the area in a substantially adverse manner. Kathy?
I think it could, so I'm going to say no.
Beth?
No.
Marty?
No.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair votes no. Uh, I think that one of the things we're concerned about is, uh, allowing this driveway to go in next to the, uh, residential property that's adjacent. Seven, intent of the ordinance twenty-nine oh six C seven, approval of the variance is consistent with the intent and purpose of this ordinance.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
And the chair votes no as well. I, I don't believe that we got the required approval on our criteria, so I need a motion.
I will be making a motion, if everybody's okay with that. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to deny the variance requested for petition number twenty-four Z B A dash zero zero six, for the property located at dime four seven seven North Territorial Road, tax ID D zero four thirteen three hundred zero zero five, for the request for the variance from section eighteen oh four C as set forth in section thirteen oh, I'm sorry, thirteen oh two, of the fifty-foot setback to a fourteen-foot setback.
I have a second motion.
You hear the second there, Janice?
I did, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, let's go down then. Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. Sorry.
Thanks for your time.
We're excited about the possibilities for your property, but we can't figure out a way to make it happen.
Go through the works.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I ask for clarification on the number five, public health, safety, and welfare, I did not hear what Beth said yesterday.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said, um, no.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, you, you want, oh, no, I, it's in my stack now, and you'll never see it again.
Don't mind.
Which one is it?
It's just this one.
I think so, it's, it's the one that I started, right?
It was all over the place.
Yeah, well, but, but so, when you assume that it's in the context of, if, if met requirements practically difficult, that, that changes the.
Yeah.
But I, I get the point, I guess.
Well, here's where we are tonight, tonight, folks, we're adjourned, 'cause we're at the end of our agenda.
Yep.